Good evening, everyone. We are about to start this meeting of the zoning commission. If you are on Zoom and you would like to have privilege of the floor, please raise your hand in the in the application. And meanwhile, Pete White will begin.
Thank you, Jean. Gosh, I wish there was. It's like a large audience. Whatever. Uh, I'm gonna read my remark tonight because I worked hard on it. I chose my words carefully. I usually speak off the cuff. And that has certain charm to it perhaps?
It does.
But I want to say these words a little more carefully. So it's it's great. Tonight, you members of the zoning commission may vote, may vote on whether to accept the draft zoning law. Consideration. Zoning, if enacted, will change the character and spirit of the town forever. You as well as the town board share a heavy responsibility. Those of us opposed to zoning have repeatedly pointed out that townwide local laws are sufficient to address concerns about land uses that the town wants to prevent or restrict. We already have in place a stormwater law, a site plan review law, and a subdivision. There is nothing illegal or unethical about voting against this draft law. You have worked long and conscientiously to craft it. That would be honorable course, given the charge you all received from the town board. Having completed that, it would be neither self contradictory nor a breach of the faith to decide nonetheless that what is before you is not in the best interests of the town Caroline. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, if you leave that with me, I will put it in the data.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, is there any of Bruce? I think you said you wanted to. I don't see anyone else's hand up.
I just wanted everybody on the board to be aware, it might already be, you might have listened to the government hopeful statement. He said, so let's talk about it. I think about my own family story. My parents started a marriage life in trailer park. My dad's salary and steel plant, eventually were able to live in a tiny upstairs flat. And from there, we stayed up, got a little piece of tile help. As we grew older, my dad changed jobs. The wife went through the stuff that involved you in progress of homes they could afford. They knew how important housing was, and they raised up us to fight for change. They were activists. And they volunteered for an organization called Housing Opportunities Made Equal. At a time and place when that was very controversial. They understood that for a society to reach its focal potential, equal access to housing is a must. Because when there's not sufficient housing for people at all income levels, they struggle. If things get bad enough, they leave in search of opportunities elsewhere. Over the last 10 years, our state has created 1.2 million jobs, but only 400,000 new homes. Many forces left to this state of affairs. But front and center are the local land use policies that are most restrictive in the nation. Through zoning, local communities hold enormous power to block growth. Creating full time bands of multifamily homes and onerous zoning and approval processes have been made difficult, even impossible to build new homes. Think about that. People want to live here. The local decisions to limit growth mean they cannot. Local governments can and should make different choices. Governor Hope this.
Thank you, Bruce. Um. Does anyone want to say anything else?
Yeah, I'll I'll just jump in and indicate that Governor Hopeful went on to say um that she having come up through local government positions fully recognizes that local governments can um implement uh local government policy that depends about conservation and economic development and housing needs because she's done it. Further, the data that the governor saw shared focused on um eastern New York State counties as being the counties where growth and housing growth is not occurring as and as needed. And southern tier and bigger lakes as well as some other western New York counties as being where housing growth is um in some ways more than meeting the need. So there's lots that the governor said. And um you should pay attention to everything that she's saying if we want to put it in context.
Thank you. Uh, before I close privilege of the floor, is there anyone else? Here in none, I'm closing privilege of the floor and going to approval of the minutes of the January third meeting. Would anyone like to move those?
Just one point, Jean. So um there were a couple of items I wanted to add to the agenda. I don't know where you want to deal with that now or after the minutes.
Right after the minutes.
Okay, cool.
Anyone want to move for a minute? Thank you, Ernie. Second, please. Any questions? All in favor? Any? That passes unanimously. Um, Bill.
All right. Um, yeah, I sent a quick note out late in the afternoon that I I knew most folks would not see, but I just wanted to get a few things down, help me as much as anything else. Um, so I have two suggestions for things to add to the agenda. We have a pretty full agenda, and if we decide not to do these, that's totally fine. Um, I'm going to make the motion, and then we could perhaps have, you know, at some point, we just, I need to describe more fully what it is I'm thinking about. And I don't want to take up too much time right now. People don't want to add anything to the agenda. But the first item uh was to have a discussion about whether there are any additional readers aid boxes that we think would warrant being created for the draft zoning law. And the second item would be a discussion of any additional public education outreach efforts about sort of uh the plan. And I can explain the motivations for both those ideas uh if we have discussion of the agenda items.
Thank you. Bill has made that motion. Would anyone like to second that? Oh, second. Barb? Um, anyone have any discussion?
Well, let me explain a little bit on on the first one, and discuss that, and then we can all expand second one and discuss that. Yeah, right.
Yeah, right. So we're not voting on doing that right now. We're just voting on discussing it as an agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah, we're discussing whether to add it as an agenda item. So Barb, I do thank you for the opportunity to to address the topics. Um, so the the first um basically is we've tried to sprinkle some readers aid boxes in to help explain some portions of the draft where the, you know, the technical language might be a little dense. I actually don't have any burning areas in which I want to put stuff except, uh, you know, in terms of the water resources and flooding overlay, we have this document that was written. It'd be very easy to turn the first paragraph or two of that into a reader's aid box if people thought that would be helpful. So my question is whether the zoning commission thought that would be helpful to residents of the town to do includes that sort of broad brush overview in the draft zoning law. Um, I think it's really great. The other ones we have because they've added some figures that really add a lot. I so I don't know. Again, it's an open question. So that's the first one, and maybe we can have a discussion of that. And then you know, I don't know. They already want Jean. Should I discuss the second one? Do you want to have a vote on what I had to say? Okay, so my idea in the second one grows out of comments that Milt Tam made at the um Zoom Public Information Meeting where he said, you know, he I he's a a technical person, but found the going tough in terms of sort of just entry into the document. And that was filed up with the conversation I had with Don Barber um some days later where he, you know, acknowledged what what Milt had said and said, yeah, you know, that that's something he also felt that was difficult. It's just this is a a long, dense document, and that may be some sort of roadmap um to it would would help or some sort of intro. So what I am envisioning is again, something like a two or three minute uh quick slideshow video that just um fairly quickly, I mean, treating the zoning law as Emily had characterized it as like an owner's manual. To just give people a sense of what is in the part of each owner's manual so that they would know, maybe would know, oh, I'm going to go read that section because that's something I'm interested in. And that would be an additional three, four, five minute video slide to create that I would be willing to do. And then in addition to that, taking what Nan sort of said, I mean, that recording of that Zoom Public Information Meeting is out there on the web, but it's this long hour long plus thing and with with quiz Q and A and everything, but I thought we could take her presentation, slice it into a few five or 10 minute bits that explain each a couple of the sections and have that post on the website. And what would have to happen, however, is a few corrections because, of course, we now have development units, not residential density uh and things like that. And there's really not these similar quick thumbnail intro to the later sections of the draft laws we have the beginning part. I do not have the time wherewithal to create such stuff. So this has to be something that folks are willing to get on board with. And so I'm not insisting on it. I'm just suggesting it might be helpful to the community to at least know how to even begin grappling with this this zoning document. So those are my two suggestions of things we could discuss. And then decide whether we really want to do them or not.
Okay, um, anyone want to say anything about those, I guess?
Are they going to be discussed again later? Or are you voting on doing them now?
I'm voting on adding them to the agenda.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, if you want, if you want to add them to the agenda, say aye.
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 That's a that's unanimous. We will add those to the agenda, and I am going to put them um after the draft law. And I will reserve time. Um, Tim.
Happy New Year, everybody. I just want to, I think the only announcement I really have is that tomorrow night at the town board business meeting, we've we've actually moved the business meeting to the third Wednesday of every month. I'm not sure if you're all aware of that. So the agenda meeting is the first Monday, and the business meeting is the third Monday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. You can tell where my head is at today. I'm sorry. Um, Wednesday. Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Um, but tomorrow night we'll be considering the code enforcement local law, which is a revision recommended by the state and to our current code enforcement law. We had a public hearing on that two weeks ago. That's all I have.
Uh, Tim, one question. I saw something on the agenda regarding some sort of um ag preservation consultant, perhaps hiring. Uh, could you just explain what that's about?
Um, yes, the the egg committee won a small grant for a countywide grant for egg preservation. And part of their grant was to engage a planner to assist them. I think Mark could actually explain this better to me than me because he's been more directly involved in it. Mark, would you mind just taking over here? Also, I've just had a strange day, so my.
Happy to, Tim. So what Tim said is correct. Um, and so the the zoning commission uh in the grant proposal they put to the state for funds.
Egg committee.
The egg committee, what did I say? Okay, sorry. So so the egg committee um applied for this grant to the state for uh developing a an egg and farmland protection plan. Um, Monica Roth at uh who's been at cooperative extension for a while is um assisting them with that. And then they're engaging a a planner to help them uh with um certain aspects. Um, the the planner is George France, who um is at Cornell in um he's going to assist them with aspects of um of developing the plan. So we invited George to tomorrow night's meeting at um seven, he he will be early in the agenda at seven o'clock to speak about his, the scope of work he'll be doing. Um, and these are um sort of, as I understand it, sort of prescribed um things that you do um in uh in developing an egg and farmland protection plan. So he's he's doing one little aspect of it. I think he's hoping to engage some students um to help with that work. So this is the the grant began, the grant started on January 1st, and I believe it's a two year uh two year schedule for completion of the egg plant. So.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
Okay, um. So let us begin with the uh the version of the draft law that we have um been reading and making some comments on. So Nan, I'm going to ask you to put it up and um direct us to places that of some of the things that we found were simply punctuation, um a little bit of verbiage that needed to be corrected. Uh, sometimes um renumbering a section. But there were things that we think we need to discuss. So let's try to get to places where we need to discuss.
So what? All right, um, I don't have, what what do you want me to put up? Do you want me to put up? Because I have to go and get the version with all the comments on it. If you want that PDF version, or do you just want the text as as you reviewed it? Because I what do you want to look at while you go through this?
Do you you start to revise the Word document, right, Nan?
Yeah, I, yes, I haven't gotten all, I certainly haven't gotten all the way through it.
We gave you a lot. I apologize for that. Um, yeah, I don't know what folks think. I was debating having you start with that, but if that's not nearly complete, maybe that's not as helpful. I I don't know.
Um, I I haven't even, to be honest with you, um, I I haven't gotten through even all of the comments in the PDF version to know what are more than just, you know, typographical or clarity kind of statements. So.
I think what I'm going to do then is put up the PDF version.
Yeah, let's try to quickly scroll.
So could you make me a whatever the that I am?
I'll do that as soon as I see you appear on the screen.
Oh, I'm not in. I think that was before the last meeting. I don't think so.
I missed reading.
Okay.
I mean, I, so I can. Yeah, I mean, if you put that PDF up, I I don't think that the zoning commitment, I think the issue is, is that um I don't know if we have a list yet of the substantive issues for you to talk about. It just, there were just, you know. There there, I don't think there's any sense in spending time going over typos and, you know, numbering and things like that.
I I think we have to do our best to try to scroll through and look for those things that are more substantive.
Okay. Okay, I hadn't signed in because I wasn't planning on being on something, so that we just get to where I need to.
Sorry, I should have had that ready to go before the meeting.
No, it's good. So like a question like, Ernie, do you have your uh text for the section that that you, for example, offered some rewording of? Because that's both a substantive, I think, as well as, it's mostly.
I I can probably drag it up. I'll look for it.
And I am going to now share my screen.
Yeah, though though on the understanding that it really was Article Five is supposed to be referring to, then what you did is simply do do some rearranging, and it may not be a big deal. Uh, that plus 6.1 has become 6.2, but we should discuss that when we get there. So I should get up.
Here we are.
There we go.
Figure out how we can. I'm just going to go to places um.
Can you like choose full full screen on your computer or something or?
I think I am, but I want to be able to see the.
So because that that doesn't show the comment, the comment boxes, does it?
I don't think so, and I don't know how to do that. Tell me.
All right, let me see if I can. I don't, yeah, I don't know why the comment boxes aren't, don't show up.
I I thought we were discussing the, are we discussing the report or the law?
Yeah, yeah, this is the wrong document. This is the preliminary report. Um, which also, yes, in the web view will not show the comments, but we need to pull up the PDF. Uh, go to the website that has the P the shared PDF.
Okay, I can do that. I am on the wrong document.
Very well, I call my documents.
Good, why don't you share?
Uh, I don't know how to share.
Okay, okay. Then you talk and get there.
Should I talk?
Yeah, you talk.
Okay. Uh, basically, uh, this was section six, which is the actions, which is supplementary design standard which follows section five, which is development standards. And the initial problem was is that this um, the section starts off with a general statement, which is A, 6.1A. And then it goes into 6.1B with a section called applicability. Um, and then it launches into uh this long sentence, which I will not read here. But uh, maybe I'll rebuild parts of it. It starts out by saying, in addition to the development standards detailed in Article Six. And Barb, it's so clearly indicated that this is a typo, uh, and that needs to be changed to Article Five, which are the um development standards and uh, excuse me. Yeah, development standards as opposed to the supplementary design standards. The development standards is very, I understand. Why, why, they are specific regulations and guidelines that apply to all zoning districts within town. Other specific to each zoning district. Uh, standards or requirements, while guidelines are best management practices. And are encouraged to be applied further needs to go with that, that, but so that's the readers aid box. Anyway, so then the this section, the applicability goes on to say um section 6.1, which is the section we're in, in this point, shall apply to all development activities required to have site plan approval pursuant to Article Three and Articles Seven and Article Eight, which are the use tables, uh, site plan review, and special use permit respectively, but shall not apply to uses requiring abbreviated site plan. Then it goes on to say, all businesses in any district, including commercial franchise or individual, should also meet all site even required. For instance, 6.1, standard for 6.1 do not apply to home occupation. So there's all this stuff in here, and I had a really hard time just kind of parsing it out.
What what page is it?
This is on page.
Sixty eight.
Well, sixty six in my document, somewhere in that.
Okay.
I'm talking with sixty seven, anyway, trying to.
Um, in in most of our document, and in most zoning ordinances, um, you have the section.
Now up.
Sorry. Yeah.
Right there.
Okay.
So um, in most cases, you know, you have an applicability section, you know, it tells you, you know, this is, these, these things are what this applies to. And then that's followed up by the exceptions, um, like in our subdivision review law. This, these things apply to, you know, all these things. Um, and then the exceptions are, you know, didn't cut it into too many pieces, you know, that's on the main road, blah, blah, blah. Okay, so um, so I kind of tried to revise this in that way. So my revision um would would read um.
I I can put that up, Ernie, if you want.
Yeah, that's good. I I just found it, but you probably have it there.
Yeah, so let me, let me share that. Whoops, Jean, unfortunately, you have to unshare. So, okay. Let me do that. Um. So here's. So, Ernie, you want to continue to describe this?
So anyway, so so I I just revised it as is out in here. So the first thing is just um applicability. In addition to the development standards detailed in Article Five, not six, so that can be changed. Um, the standards of of the of this um section set up in, but in this line, in this shall apply to all development activities required to have site plan approval pursuant to Article Three, which is uses and dimensions. And Article Seven, Site Plan Review, and Article Eight, Special Use Permit. And those commercial uses eligible for abbreviated site plan review pursuant to pursuant to section seven point two C. And we need to go to section seven point two D, where you find seven point two C.
Yeah, and that that's where if you read the list of conditions, you get to go through ASPR rather than site plan.
Yes.
It actually says, applicability, all uses identified in Table One of Articles Seven, Four, shall require site plan review and approval by the review board. Any expansion of an existing user option, the especially twenty five or greater, shall also require site plan review and approval by the review board according to that. Okay, so um but then in the last sentence is, all businesses in any district, including commercial franchise performing base businesses, shall also meet all site even sites in the section six point one.
Uh, can you stop there for a second? So I agree that Article Six in the first line should be Article Five. I am wondering about the reference to 6.1 here. Because 6.1 is sort of this general thing and then has some general guidelines, but.
But it's 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 this section, 6.1.
It is.
Right, but but there's no standards in 6.1.
Yes, it's all of these.
It's, yeah, it's right below it.
Well, yeah, keep going. I mean.
Well, I I I don't have any of the here. I I would have to get the.
All right. I mean, I think.
This is just Ernie's rewrite.
Right, 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 right. I think most of the standards are in 6.2.
Okay, well, we'll we'll fix, we'll we'll highlight that, and don't worry about the number. I'll fix that. I'll go back and fix that.
So we're so we're going to fix those things that says that development standards are then are defined, the standards in this, in this section, 6.2.
So we're we're going to discuss that. We'll get to that in a bit.
But I mean, I mean, this was the confusing thing to me. Why is it referring to the the paragraph I'm already in? So you're telling me that section 6.1 should be 6.2?
That, right. Well, that's what I'm suggesting, but let's let's get to that because we don't have everything there. Um, and I guess I'm, I, you know, what I like is how you indeed laid out the exceptions as you did there. Um, as you said, they're not sort of buried in line in a paragraph, so it might be easier for folks to quickly see.
Right.
Oh, here's the exceptions. Home occupations do this other thing instead. Multifamily structures do this other thing instead. So I'm cool with that change, but I don't know what other people in zoning commission think. And then we got to fix the numbers, make sure the numbers make sense.
Oh, I mean, my question is, are there other things that I've missed? I mean, are there other special things that should be included under here? The the way this this chapter is kind of set up, this this it has um oh, you know, goes on to talk about sections and stuff about um. Additional standards for specific uses and that's where the, the home occupations come in. But there's also, you know, junk, uh, farm worker housing, um, which should have referenced all of those. Things, uh, as being, you know. You do farm worker, does farm worker housing have to, to, you know, meet six point one?
But that, that's where you go back to article three, the uses and dimensions table.
Okay, I guess.
Anything in the use table that requires site plan review would have to follow that. Would have to follow this section. That's what this says.
Pursuant, yeah.
However, but the last sentence there in that says, all businesses in any district. Shall also meet the signing design standards of section six point one.
And I think that actually should be six point two again.
And probably should be six point two.
Yeah, I just checked. It is six point two.
Right, so that means, and, and I, I actually, and I like, you know, any business is supposed, you know, meet these standards.
Right.
But except for these things mentioned, and, and, you know, like, like a bed and breakfast, for example. Which is a permitted you a P without review. Do they have to meet all the same commercial design standards that are in section six point two?
No, only the, only the things that require site plan approval. Or, I mean, generally, I mean, I think we started off with that this was applied to. Anything that requires a site plan review or a special use permit. Because remember, this was originally the section that was included in site plan review. And then once the site plan moved into zoning, we made a separate section for the design standards, so. So anything that gets a P in the use table does not meet, does not have to go through site plan review. And therefore it would not have to meet these standards.
All right, so, so that is saying that the last sentence in paragraph B is not correct as worded. Um, that is the previous sentences that are right. Um, because it's not all businesses in a district.
So unless you, I think you would have to add, um, unless it, unless it is a permit, permitted use.
Well, it has to be permitted by right. All these are permitted.
Or why do you need to even take the, why do you even need to have this sentence if this first sentence says it all here? All developments required to have site plan review or special use permit.
Um, I think that at one point we were trying to capture things because we wanted to give an easier ride to some businesses. And we had a thought at one point that we're going to totally exempt some businesses from site plan review. Then we switched to having that be abbreviated site plan review. So I guess I'm more comfortable. Given that it also covers abbreviated site plan review, commercial uses, getting rid of that last sentence. But, um, I think that that's, but I want to hear from Ernie. And I actually, I have to step away for a couple minutes. I apologize.
Okay. So, um, what I'm hearing is change article six to five, change article six point one to six point two. Um, add in the things that Ernie has said here, like N dimensions and review and permit, and get rid of the last sentence.
The all businesses in any district, including commercial franchise.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes. Um, I would also suggest that we capitalize things like site plan approval. Or site plan, or site plan in this case should be capitalized. I mean, this is the, the capitalization discussion that we're going to have eventually.
Okay. So, um, so Nan, we're talking about in the second line, making site plan capitalized and get in the definite sentence.
Here?
Yeah, making the, making those capitalized site plan. Yeah.
Yeah, if you, you, you tend to the comments, you know, Michelle went through and, and highlighted that visiting places where. Uses the terminology that is in the definitions is not, um, capitalized and, and.
Right, right. I, I haven't done any of that yet.
I know, yeah. Um, it's just, you know, I just, you know.
Okay.
We're just having this discussion, so we don't have to go later. Plus, do we agree that all of those things that are in definition should be. There unless they are words that are being used in a non-specific.
Yes.
Way.
I think we'd all agree to that.
Residential occurs in the definitions. It need not be capitalized every single moment occurs in the document.
Right.
Please.
Okay, sometimes this should be capitalized, I think.
Sometimes it should, when it's referring to the definition in a specific way.
So Bill, I'm going to just repeat what we, we're saying is that in this section, we are getting, we are making it article five, section six point two. Including the things in blue, like uses and dimension, site plan review, we capitalize site plan, we're getting rid of the final sentence. All businesses in any district.
Right, okay.
I understand.
Okay, with that, um, are all of you in favor of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes? Okay, that's great. Thank you. I'm gonna reshare what I was sharing. I think it's this. Yes.
That's tricky when you have to pick them.
Yeah, so, um, what I'm going to do is just sort of go down, uh, through the comments from the beginning. And see where I think it's actually about something, um. Uh, I think this is an important question. Nan, or Barb asks, um. Should this be the draft, the title of the draft law on the first page, zoning regulations of the town of Caroline? And, um. Nan, tell me what it would be. It's actually the town of Caroline zoning law, isn't it?
Um, yeah, I cha- I changed that already. That, that was, it should be, be consistent in refer to, um. In the, let's see, let me just go back up. The very first section says. This local law shall be known as the town of Caroline zoning law.
Yeah, so that's what we're going to call it throughout. Um. Michelle asks, in the second sentence in the reader's aid box, it asks, the terms and conditions associated used in this law. Should associated be taken out? The terms and conditions used in this law, and I think that seems rational. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, that was just the equivalent of a typo, you know, many, many letters of a typo.
Um. So Michelle says a little further on, I know the building on nearby property that had an apartment located on the top floor of the building that stores farming homes, et cetera. What happens in that case? Um, and that's, this is on page nine, I think.
I respond that that is a mixed use and would be governed by the, uh, uniform building code and therefore the. Uh, no longer is the, is the.
An agricultural use.
Yeah, and I understand that now, and I apologize for causing any.
I thi- I think it was an excellent question, Michelle. Feel, feel, feel no embarrassment or make no apologies.
Okay, I do like that it's interment and not internment.
Sorry about that.
A lot of the recipes are, are, uh, are, um. I'm not sure which I've got. Um, Bill, I think on page thirteen, it's about, uh.
And most I think is wording stuff that I am happy to leave to Nan to sort out our comments unless she wants advice from us. But I think there was some discussion of the, the wording of that last sentence and, you know, I, I put my two cents in.
This is about, uh, additional use because of what is outdoor recreation. So Nan, we're, we'll leave it up to you to find something.
Yeah, um, yes.
Um, Michelle asks, open historic.
Uh, yeah.
It's just a typo. Okay, good. Uh, open space perhaps.
Well, I don't know if it's either one of those. Maybe it is, but, um, yeah, fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think those are just, I, I don't, those are just small little wording things.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've got, um. Ernie on, it's about development unit, um.
Nan sent something out via email that was an adaptation, I think of hers plus Ernie's that I thought was great. Is, is that correct, Nan? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I don't want to have Jean stop with her, what she's doing, but yes. I, I think I, I, I think I meshed them together to create a unified one.
Right. Did anyone object to the way that Nan wrote that? I do not.
No, I, I, I thought Nan's was good. I agree.
Okay, and I think, uh, that we had a little back four chat about industrial light manufacturing, and I think we solved that.
Did we? I mean. What are we going to change so that it's consistent? That's, you know, I just, I just find it weird that we.
Yeah, I, I think that I changed it so that it's industrial use comma light and took the manufacturing out from the definition as well as. The word manufacturing from the use table, just so that it's all consistent. So it's all, it didn't change anything. It just. We didn't change the definition, so it's just industrial use comma light.
Okay, so it's consistent wording both places. What about industrial use heavy, which does not appear in our use table? Have we decided therefore it's not allowed use in the town?
I mean, that's generally, if something's not in the use table, that is generally how you interpret that table.
No, I understand that. And I, I was trying to remember, we made a conscious decision as a zoning commission. I think we might have, and that's.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. It's just my feeble gray matter. Great.
I know what you mean.
It's just full of so much stuff, Bill.
On page thirty-five, um, Barb mentioned something about the last sentence here in, I believe, D. Um. And, and that combining them in use tables, some of the hamlets.
Yeah, and I, I think that, that I already did that. I have gotten up to that point, so they're already combined because they were exactly the same. So that makes sense to consolidate that.
Okay, that sounds great.
So I've done that.
Um. Michelle says in the use table about multi-family. Do we have to change multi-family dwelling to say that four units or less needs an ASPR as per section seven? And that would be on page thirty-nine.
I mean, I, I think that's the point that again, we give this, this escape clause for certain uses that meet the conditions. I would suggest that we don't need to put that in the use table, but I, this is just for discussion. That a use that has SPR or SP is directed to article seven. And then in article seven is written down, they say, oh, looky, there's this, this special case I can be. I think, because otherwise every single time there would be use, you'd have to put a star saying, oh, but if you can meet these conditions. So I would recommend, I understand multi, multifamily housing is different, that we not bother to mention in the use table. That's just where I'm at.
Okay.
Another, uh, one, another thing we could do is we could just add a general note that. Um, as per section, blah, blah, blah. You know, some uses that are listed as requiring a site plan review may be exempted from site plan review. But then that gets into the whole discussion of whether you still need a special use permit. So if you, so this is where the, the exemption is that you developed is difficult. Because a use may still require a special use permit, but will not need a site plan review if they. If they follow through all of those items.
No use escapes site plan review entirely, right? Because we made it abbreviated site plan review. Which I know is a different creature to some extent, but it's still a form of site plan review. So I would hesitate by saying could be exempted from site plan review.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Right, and I, and we did have this discussion, email worth coming up again. I think that's something that his having ASPR and the use table calls for a special use permit still requires a special use permit. I see no conflict.
Yeah, I agree.
But yeah, and I have no, you know, I think adding a little note in our box, like where we have the key that just says C section, whatever, for uses that may, um.
Qualify for abbreviated site plan review instead of site plan review. Excellent. I like that idea.
So just to clarify, Nan, are you talking about, um, at the beginning of section four point one? Item B explains what the symbols are, and it says, you know, like ASPR means abbreviated site plan review. So they're putting them on that line, um, you know, also C seven point one, whatever. Is that where you're talking about?
Um, actually, I was thinking about the, the box where it says key in the table itself. Like if you go down a little bar, um, Jean, to the table.
I, I would suggest putting it in both places.
Yeah, I agree.
That's fine.
And, and also Nan, just a reminder that the table of contents and the numbering in section, in, in article seven. Uh, appears to be missing section seven, eight.
Yep, I, I fixed that already.
Okay, but, but then like in the, in the text and like in the use table here and that box of symbols. It refers to seven, ten, which would be seven, nine. So that's going to have to wrap the document.
Yep, already fixed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to get back to the special use permit stuff. So if we continue to have special use permit required. But we're going to let them go through ASPR, they still have, the special use, use permit always required public hearing. Or am I wrong?
Uh, yes, a special use permit requires us a public hearing.
Okay, that was, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, so.
I'll check, but I'm pretty sure.
I just look, it's, 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 that's, it says so right there. Um, yeah, so I think we're back at that, you know, kind of like, how do we, how do we. Allow some of these things to happen without having to go through all this extra rigmarole?
Or are we? Yeah, well, okay.
I want to leave something to the town board to do. Um. Well, let's talk about that.
Well, again, remember that the special use permit looks at the use. The site plan looks at all of the things that were, you know, associated with that on the ground. So let's say there is a use that requires a special use permit, but it meets all the criteria. That you added, so it would go through ASPR. I mean, I think that's still helpful because then you don't have all of the things that you have to do through site plan. And then the planning board would just look at the criteria for a special use permit and the ASPR. And yes, it, it, there is still some process, but it's still shortened because you don't go through the whole site plan process. I, I don't think you can have a special use permit without a hearing.
Right, and that in terms of. Well.
Well, no, I mean, the state law requires S U P, uh, uh, hearing, you said, Eric, uh, Ernie, right?
Is that correct?
I thought you told you just looked that up. Okay.
No, it's, it's in our draft law. Like, man's shaking, shaking your head affirmatively.
Yes, a special use permit needs a hearing.
Right, as, as, that's a requirement placed by state law.
Yeah, and I, you know, you could, you could supersede state law. We would have to add in. A special section that specifically says you are superseding state law. Under this circumstance for these reasons. So we would have to add that in, and that would be certainly something I would want the attorney to weigh in on.
Well. I'd rather not get into that.
The other reason that there is, um, a public hearing is because it is a special use. And you want to allow neighbors and people who feel that that might be affected by this particular special use to be able to give voice. Right?
I, I'm okay. So I, I, with the one possible, I know. One thing we've heard both obviously from Bruno, but, but Ernie also is that. You know, they're concerned about the use of this, especially as permit for multi-family housing. So, Ernie, how do you feel if we exempted multifamily housing of four units or less from, from the need for a special use permit? How does the rest of zoning commission feel about that?
That would be better. That would be more in line with what I thought we were kind of doing.
Give me, give us your advice on, is that legal? And then I'll take, um, Michelle.
Um, so would, so would there be no review for that?
No, no, they would, well, if, if they could, if they could miss, if they could qualify for ASPR, then they would. If they didn't qualify ASPR, they'd go through SPR, but that a four unit or less apartment building wouldn't need a special use permit. Is that reasonable? Is that dangerous? Is that legal?
Well, it's legal. Um, it's, if that's a policy for the town to establish, if that's what you want. That's, that's a policy decision.
So, um, when I, I heard. So, um, when I, I heard Ernie say that, I'm taking what Ernie is saying as a motion. That, um, but I'm gonna first have, um, Michelle say what she wants to say.
I, I guess I have mainly a question is what's the problem with them going through a special use? Wha- what's the problem with going through a he, a hearing? I'm assuming it would be fairly brief.
Um, I think what, what, um, has been brought up is, um, this is something that Bruno Schickel has mentioned several times, feeling that often uh, when you have to go for a special use permit, that, uh, review boards don't follow the law. They want to argue about, we just don't want to do that.
Yeah, but I, I don't think you can craft a law assuming that, uh, your boards are, are gonna be unreasonable. I mean, that, that just doesn't seem logical to me.
Well, but I think it's also inappropriate to be crafting the law that is, and then you have to barely deny uh, commercial development.
But you're not denying it, you're just requiring a hearing. And, and I could understa, I could see that if somebody knows an apartment building's going up near them, they might have questions about, I, I can't hear you, Ernie, so I'm gonna keep talking. I, I would, people might, people might have questions about whether it's gonna affect their well, or they might have other questions about it, and I, so I don't see what the problem with having a hearing is.
Okay, I'm gonna go to, I think that Ernie was offering a motion that says that we should, uh, under the, um, special use permits exempt for family apartment buildings.
And we could do that in that.
Well, that would be in the use table. So you would be creating a new line in the use table that says multifamily dwellings, you know, four units or less, and then you would allow it in whatever district as either an ASPR or P.
Okay, so.
Okay, we could do it that way, but the other way to do it would be go to that list of things that are allowed this exemption and then just say, oh, and by the way, multifamily under four units does not require special use permit. So you're buried in there.
Well, my, if I think if your policy is, is that you want to allow four unit multifamily dwellings to move forward in a different way, the use table is the best place to say that so that you're clear. That, that's where people are gonna look the fir, at first, find it.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense.
I like that the most.
Okay, so Nan, um, yes, I mean,
um, I'd like to make a motion that the use table, our acceptable uses, uh, be um, uh, revised to have two lines for multifamily dwelling, including multi-building residential development, which is how it's labeled now. Um, and it'd be broken into two rows. One row, the first row would have that language, but would say uh, for, um, uh, dwellings of four, four units or less. And there, that would be Ps across the board in all districts. And then the, the other row would have that wording and would say, you know, multifamily, uh, dwellings of, uh, five units or more and would be SUP across the board as it is currently. That's my motion. Sorry.
Wait, can I have a question? Can I ask Barbara a question first?
No, that, well, it's fine. It's now we have, yeah, because it's, it's seconded, so absolutely.
Well, so by P, does that mean it, it doesn't need an ASPR?
Right.
Yes, it means.
Correct. It just needs a building permit.
Because, because, uh, what we've already said in section seven, one, two, C, or whatever that is, um, which was the ASPR, uh, exceptions, that size structure was already included as, as, um, you, you know, it's requiring ASPR, but what we're, what we're, that's not, we, yeah, as requiring ASPR, but what we're trying to accomplish here is to make it even more straightforward, um, to have a, to have a small, multi-family residence.
But I would not, I would, in the discussion, Barb, I would not include including multi-building residential development in that line, because I think that that's a bigger development.
Right, uh, that's a good point. Yeah, so I guess the first row would just refer to multifamily dwellings of four units or less.
Yeah.
And then the second row would be multifamily dwelling, including multi-building.
More than four, including, yeah. All right. All right, so I think we probably should have some discussion of whether, so I'm fine with the splitting. I think that will make it easy for us to sort of fine tune how these are, are dealt with, but I, I would like to see some discussion of, of the P versus the ASPR. Um, and Barb, maybe you want to explain to me why you chose to, to say just a permitted by right rather than any review whatsoever?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to ASPR. If that's, if that's what the way it wants to go, I'm trying to address many of the concerns we've been hearing about trying to lower the barriers for multifamily housing. And in the time of current line, it seems to me that small scale multifamily housing is appropriate, and we have, we have it in the town and it works, um. And so again, just, I, you know, the motivation is to lower any barriers. That, you know, they still have to get a building permit and all, and they've built the main water and sewage, but that's not, you know, doesn't necessarily require ASPR to do that.
Okay.
So let me ask a question. Ernie, would you accept Barbara's, um, Barb's, uh, uh, new motion as sort of an amendment?
The, the breaking in to, but, but taking out the, um, multi.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have that on the floor now, because, and we've had a few questions asked. It's, it would be on page thirty-nine. You would take what's multifamily residence there?
Yeah.
Multifamily dwelling. You would split that into two lines. And it would, one, the first line would say a multifamily dwelling of, of four or fewer units.
Right.
And the second line would be as it is. And the question is, should it be P all the way across? If we do this, or should it be ASPR? I believe that's the question, right?
Do we need a new motion for that, or?
Nope. If somebody, that's the motion on there is now is P, and we'll see if it, if, if it moves or if it fails, and then we can see. So all those in favor of that motion splitting into two, having P all the way across with the four unit dwelling, say aye.
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 That's four. Um, against?
Uh, me. I think it should be an ASPR.
Okay, but with four and with me, five, it passes. So that passes and.
Without any review, it's just gonna be P all the way across?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Michelle, I, I'm, I'm somewhat embedded on the question, but again, for decades, we've had no review of all those sort of developments in town, so the fact that the larger ones will get reviewed is maybe a good, a good step for the town. Uh, we do, then I think we can probably modify the section seven point two C when we get there, because it talks about multifamily developments of four units or less, but now we don't need to give them an ASPR exemption, exemption from site plan review, because they already have no review whatsoever.
Okay.
Well, again, that's not true. They have to, they have to meet codes of, you know.
Yes. No, 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 I meant town review. I mean, yes, they have code.
Yeah, but I think we just need to be clear in all of our language that there is review that occurs for virtually all buildings in the town at some level.
And including, including, um, what it looks like. Okay.
What? Wait, I didn't hear what you said, Jean.
Including what it looks like. For commercial.
Really? Of a commercial building, right?
Exactly.
Wait, so for, so that side, that four or less is considered commercial still?
In this case, it would not be, I mean, it's considered commercial by the state, but I don't, it would not have to go through the commercial.
Well.
It would have to go through the commercial building code.
Right, but, but it would not have to meet any of the commercial design standards for the town, because it does not require ASPR or SPR.
Right.
So if, if we want any of those design standards to apply, then we would have to choose ASPR instead of P.
If somebody wants to change this, somebody who voted just for the motion has to cha, has to offer the, the thing. Can't be, it couldn't, yeah.
Well, so that my, I, I would offer a motion to amend that. They would be required ASPR.
Well, yes, you can't do that, she said, so, all right, so.
All right, fine.
So, uh, I, so, so I, I, I will make that motion.
It's not even Jean's rules, it's Robert's rules.
Right, so, so, right, so, so I will offer that, now that I'm seeing implications of the commercial design standards, I mean, you know, because we've asked multifamily developments to sort of look like a house, and they might typically anyway, but at least it's worth one more visit to that question. So I will move that we amend our decision to change P to ASPR.
Okay. Um, Bill, she can second, that's fine. Bill, Michelle. Uh,
And for, and for discussion, I will offer what I just said, which is, yeah, I'm getting, you know, I, I can kind of go either way, but it does feel like some of those commercial design standards ought to apply to someone. Uh, you know, like, like we said, we, we encourage adaptive use of buildings and that should fit in with the neighborhood and, you know, those sort of things. I'd like them to apply if possible.
Okay. Hearing that, um, amendment to the, that last decision, all in favor of this amendment, change from P to ASPR all the way across? Say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no others? That motion fails and we're.
Ask for those and.
Oh.
Aye.
They.
May, may, yeah, okay, that fails.
That was ayes and nays.
That was ayes and nays. I was taking the reminder to be nays, but you know, there you are. Failed, okay. Um, we're moving on to page forty-five, where there, Barbara asked a question in the reader, I believe in the Reader's Aid box, so let's look. It says, is this language still needed relevant regarding hamlets, given that there is not a specific minimum lot size specified? And Michelle agrees. And Bill agrees. Um, and Bill suggests that we maybe want to say that the minimum lot size is sub-sized to meet all Tompkins County Department of Health, Water and System renovations. So I think what you're talking about is the last paragraph before the Reader's Aid box.
Probably.
Page forty-five.
Yeah, is there any reason not to make such change? I mean, just leave this in Nan's hands? Does this require discussion?
Um, yeah, the, no, the A, four point two A two i- is no, yes, that needs to be changed. That was leftover language before you got rid of the minimum lot sizes. So, yeah, that needs to be changed to be consistent with the table.
Okay, so good. So everyone seems to, I think, agree on that. Uh, I think Ernie asked questions if everyone seems happy with a little further on. Um, in the, let's look at the Reader's Aid there. Is everyone happy with how the Reader's Aid is? There's a couple of questions about this.
On page forty-five.
On page forty-five. Like, um,
Yeah, yeah.
And, and.
The, the, right, the first sentence in, in, in the second paragraph uses the word minimum lot size. That has to be changed.
Okay, so Nan, that's just for your attention. Okay.
Well, but that, go back, I'm sorry, um, the Reader's Aid, I, I don't know, I, I, where it says, I don't know where you were talking about. It says setting a density limit rather than specifying a minimum lot size. I, I think that's is that the sentence you were talking about? Because that sentence still matters, I think.
Right, no, it was the first sentence in the second paragraph in that Reader's Aid box is what we're talking about right now.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, all right, I got that down.
Where it says the number is, is, you know, so.
Okay. Um.
But pretty much wherever you get rid of the phrase minimum lot size, you know, wherever it doesn't get too overly redundant, um, you know, make reference back to the fact that, you know, it, they, all lots must still get septic and water, you know, approval, be able to get septic and water approval.
Okay. On page forty-six, there's a couple of questions about, you know, about combining these into one hamlet again, and I think Nan has done that, or was going to do that if you can. Um, I think the rest of this is stuff that Nan can do.
Can I offer something?
Sure.
In that table, the, where it says it has minimum residential lot in a and then it would, I, I would put the lot shall and leave out minimum, since it's.
Oh, in the red line.
Yeah.
Um, uh, Mark is suggesting is that the minimum lot besides, get rid of shall.
I was, I was saying get rid of minimum, because there is no minimum.
Lot shall be sized to these.
No, the minute, no, there is really a minimum. The minimum is what Tompkins County requires.
Right, yeah.
Or will allow, again, they have no, they have no strict minimum. They can't, you can't ask them, what, what's the smallest lot I can do? They'll say, well, we gotta come out and check your soil, basically, right?
Right.
Um, Barb asks on the following, on forty-seven, can we get rid of the second um, footnote, and I think everyone seems to think possibly Bruce has a question mark because.
Yeah, so minute, so that's a footnote to, to the, um, line up in the, to the row that's titled minimum residential lot.
Right.
Which we've already said is A for egg rural and uh, has to meet water and sewage for the county. So not sure that we need footnote two.
Okay, I think you're right.
And then the other footnote is three, four, we have to change.
Be renumbered.
Two and three.
Okay, Nan?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and Ernie suggests also that that be counted, um, rather than allowed. Um, that's how we are. Um, Bill, on page forty-eight, you have a comment about super scripts referring to the footnotes and extending.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, I think Nan can interpret that, but yeah, I mean, that was, um, the, in the table, there was a big three at the end of something, but it's supposed to be a super script three. That's all. It's, it's just a typo sort of fix thing.
Okay.
And, and, and then Michelle was the first one to draw attention to it anyway. I don't want to claim credit for being that, uh, observant.
Okay. Uh, I think all that stuff about minimum lot size, Nan will clean up. Um, Bill has a new, the, the new Reader's Aid box.
So, I mean, E- Ernie, um, I did a new version. Ernie fixed up the text. I didn't hear any further chit chat. Are people happy with that version with, with, and I have it, I can post, I can show it, uh, with, with Ernie's fixes? And, and, and.
Yeah, I think I responded to your email saying I was happy with it.
Very happy.
We're excited.
There's a lot of joy.
All right.
So, so then the one that's in this PDF document has been updated.
Uh, I did not, well, so let's see. Yes, yes, I, 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 I said, and I told you not to put it in yet because the zoning commission hadn't signed off on it yet. Now we have. And I can send it to you with, with Ernie's fixes.
Okay.
But recast it in terms of development units um, rather than future subdivision opportunities. Um, and then there's a corresponding language change in the text that we'll probably get to momentarily.
Right, in section four point four. Um, making that development unit somewhere. Yeah, I think, um, he wants to change, Bill wants to change four, four A to the development units are just what I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and we all agree with that. Um, and I had said something about the word density feeling awkward. And, and I, um, saying that perhaps no additional development that increases density shall be allowed. And um, and that's in the first, the end of the first paragraph in section four point four, and everyone seems to be, Bill says, how about no additional development or subdivision activity? So that's what it says now. Okay, good. Um, And. Barb says on page fifty-two. Inserting Ag Rural District, and everyone seems to agree with that. Um. Ernie says.
Yeah, I'm assuming, you know, as guidance to man, that, you know, if someone makes a suggestion and, and one or two of us say, good idea, or I agree, that, that it's a done deal, that if someone really hated it, they would have said, no, I don't like that.
Right, right, and what I. And I was just going to, as I go through, if there was anything that was like a serious, like, you know, I had some sort of serious issue with whatever, which I, you know, it's more of a question, I would make a list of those things that need additional discussion.
Yeah, and, and I think here's one, this thing of lead, uh, should probably be discussed.
Yes, that's my next one that I pulled up.
Yeah.
So that's this on the Reader's Aid box on page fifty-three.
Right, and, and then it gets reflected in what is in the density bonus regulations.
So Ernie is saying that, um, we shouldn't use lead because could we change this to renewable energy incentive of twenty percent? Is that what you're saying?
Right. I mean, lead is a, is a really, um, it's a, it's a holistic way of looking at things, they don't have just an energy lead, you have to, you know, in order to become certified, lead, lead, gold, platinum, silver, or whatever, you not only have to meet energy goals, you have to use, uh, you know, recyclable materials, you have to source your wood for sustainable forest practices, you have to provide bicycle racks.
Right.
You've got to locate your business within a certain distance of amenity and public transportation, so, you know, and it's, and it's a fair of a thing to get through, um, so. I think that we just need to lower the bar a little bit. Um, and I was going to suggest that the stretch energy code. You know, in terms of the amount of difficulty that presents for the developer is not dissimilar from providing some solar panels on your building. It requires a little bit more insulation. Um, and as the standard is constantly, is going to, to continue to get.
Stretched.
Stretched, I think.
Yep.
Um, so, I don't know, that's what it was my suggestion.
Um. So why people think about that, going to the stretch energy.
Or, or we could just say, you know, something that meets, you know, is, is four, five percent better than New York State Energy Code, which you can also demonstrate with a uh, a tool that is commonly available on the web, which is used for establishing uh, compliance with the energy code.
I like the stretch energy, energy code, I think that makes sense. Um. Everyone happy with doing that, going to stretch energy code there?
In both items, in the Reader's Aid.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, the, the Reader's Aid box could just say renewable energy credit, or we could say stretch code, but the point is that the renewable energy density bonus, what does that require? And now we're changing that regulation to say not lead, but strict energy code, that's my understanding what's going on here, am I right?
Yes.
You could, I, I think, uh, I think it should reference whatsoever in, you know, whatever wording is used in the development standard, so, you know, I was suggesting the, the solar panel, I mean, how we have renewable energy credit, we had the renewable energy credit, and then you have um, affordability credit, and then there was the lead credit, but now that's going to be stretch energy credit, or whatever that's named, should be what's referenced here, I don't care what it is, it's just the same.
Okay.
And I, I'm confused, because there's two things. The lead standards are actually in the green energy incentive. Which is, is different than the next one, which is the re, use of renewable energy incentives, so there's two different things there.
Okay, good point.
Well, the renewable energy incentive is putting up solar panels.
Right, but the new, the, using the, I would say the stretch energy code replaces the lead in number two, not number three.
Yes.
Right, in the Reader's Aid box, we can use whatever one of these things we want to use.
Right.
Okay. And then there was also a question about which Ernie was scratching his head at, and frankly, I was too, about the average of, of eight equals three.
Oh, we took that, get rid of that.
Okay, good, okay, good, that was confusing.
Well, I, I says either deleted or fixed the wording, I can't remember what I said in my comment to respond it, to reply to Ernie, it's probably up above.
If you quit trying to do that, ma'am.
Okay, if you fixed it, I'm happy.
Yeah, yeah, she'll, she'll.
Okay, um. Ernie, you're saying on the bottom of page fifty-three, I think this whole paragraph, C four, goes away, about development units. And Bill says Ernie is right, and and then I think fifty-four, there's something else, but I think that's right, so section four is going away.
Wait, the affordable or senior housing?
No, no.
No.
What number four are you, saying goes away?
Four C, wasn't it?
C four.
C four.
C four is affordable or senior housing?
Right, right, no.
Why would that go away?
Why would that go away?
I think this was, uh, I think this was a weird little thing where a comment I made somewhere else got transported, transported somewhere else, is that what's going on? Let's see, I think this is because we've gotten developing it, oh, yeah. Um. Right, okay, so, okay, so this is, yeah, this was the, the thing, was that, so, um. So this is just an additional bonus, I mean, we're already allowing, uh, you know, affordable housing to, uh, get, you know. It accounts for fewer development units than single-family, and that's a bonus, but so on top of that, we're giving another bonus, and that's in the total number of lots that you can take out of this, as opposed to your development unit bonus that we're already giving. This double-dipped, um.
But there, there's, yeah, not necessarily wrong double dipping, it does work differently in the hamlet districts versus the ag rural district, because again, that's part of the point there, that in the hamlet districts, since there is no minimum lot size, you can't really give a density bonus, because already someone could build as densely as one could do water and septic. So it doesn't make sense to have, uh, to some extent, that in a hamlet district. Um. And then in the ag rural district, one could do it, it would be double dipping, that's why I said I'd have to keep thinking about it, this is the end of my thinking, I guess. Uh, it would allow someone who has affordable senior housing to first build, you know, we say for affordable housing or senior housing, that you get a, a six-year apartment building, plus every three after that, town is only one development unit. And then we're going to give another twenty-five percent, so I agree with Ernie that it's like you could just change the other number and get rid of this, I, so it's unclear to me why we have it both places, since it doesn't apply in the hamlet districts, and we already have a density bonus increase, substantial one, in the ag rural, but.
Well, I think because it, this was in there before you changed.
Yes.
You know, it's been in there from the beginning, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I understood, the question is, does it still need to be here, you know, agreed.
I think you're saying something like, you're, you're giving P even better view than like the younger person, or something like that.
Yeah.
What you said.
No, I, that, that's not the point, the, the point here is that, you know, we are, we've already given affordable housing a bonus by giving them more development units. Do we need to give them yet another bonus through these other, other, uh? So, um. It's not a huge bonus, right, what is it, ten percent, is it one hundred and four?
Twenty-five.
So, what, what Ernie, you had suggested in the comments originally was, we should get rid of this, is that what you're still saying?
Um. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so that's a motion to get rid of section four A, because it's covered elsewhere in the ag rural district. Um, does someone want to move, uh, second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so. Okay, that's Ernie and Bill, any discussion? All in favor?
No, I, I do know a point of discussion, um, and that's that the table that we added back in article three, um. Only talks about affordable housing, it doesn't talk about senior housing, and this piece that we're about to leave, that's about senior.
There was comments on that to say we should add senior housing here, you may have been you um, that first put that in, I guess we haven't talked about that as a group, but I took it from that, that commentary in the PDF document, that we were adding senior housing to that.
Well, I guess I'm not comfortable voting on leaving that passage until we reach that table two point one, density of development unit uh, counted by development type will, uh, include the wording senior housing, and then talks about affordable housing.
Yeah, excellent point.
That was an amendment.
I think she's offering those.
Yes, and I second the amendment. So with that, getting rid of four A here and adding, uh, senior housing in under the table two point one. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, you said four A.
Well, she meant C.
I'm sorry, section.
C.
Section C four. And then it goes through four A and B. Um.
That's right.
All in favor of, anyone opposed? Nope, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're whipping along here. Uh. Anyone else see something, the next thing, that? Uh, Ernie, you're sort of talking about that a little bit. Oh, there's a question here, it's a question. This was, um. The question. Ernie, I think you're saying about.
Affordable lots offsite stuff, I just, I cannot let my head over.
Um, this is.
Just about that too.
Is this anything happen?
Well, it does happen, I don't know what would happen here, but it does happen, and this is where say you have a lot that's only, I don't know, ten acres, and you're going to build some multi-family housing there, but you want to get, um, a density, uh, I don't know, a bonus for being a, a good human being, and so, but you happen to own a lot that's uh, you know, half a mile away, and you're, and what you're saying is, I'm going to build some of the apartments over there, and they are going to be uh, load and body of pop, or there's going to be senior housing, or there's going to be something. So that does happen. Right? Am I crazy, ma'am?
No, yeah, I mean, some people some towns handle this by having, um, you know, like a fee in lieu of uh, some communities say, yeah, I mean, if you want to, if you're going to build, um, affordable units over here, we'll give you a density bonus over there, um, you know, so, yes, it's that doesn't happen very often, but it could happen.
Well, I guess my feeling is, is that, to me, the way it's written right now, nobody's going to know what to do with this, so unless we flush it out, I think we have to leave it out. And, and, you know, and should somebody come up with that, we can, you know, give a variance or something, but, you know, I just, I just find this to be just so totally uh, obscure, that I can't figure out how it would work, you know, what.
You mean the whole section five there, or just the one about offsite?
Uh, the, uh, affordable housing unit, um. Well, I guess, yeah.
B and E.
The, B and E was, I think, what you're talking about.
Yeah, the, the offsite part doesn't make sense to me either, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, affordable lots, and then I also kind of questioned the affordable lots, um.
Uh, that's what developers are saying, or, or someone's offering property for sale. Um, and they're saying, I will do something like, I'm going to build this housing, a bunch of housing units over here, but I'm going to over here, uh, I have a piece of property, and I'm going to.
Sell it cheap.
Sell it cheap.
Yeah, I'm cheap, you're going to have to sell it.
Well, we, we sort of went through what that standard of affordability is, and it's about that.
Right.
There's a set of. Yeah, income.
Kind of income and.
Yeah, I mean, so C would be, but let's say you had a conservation subdivision, and you were going to put in twenty houses.
Right.
You, you could say, you know, X percent of those lots, you're going to sell below market rate in order to get twenty-five houses.
Who's going to tell you what a market rate is, and how much you gotta go below market rate, you'd have to do if you follow up. I mean, it just sounds like you're kind of setting up some sort of vehicle where the town can cautiously, you know, kind of let somebody do something, they, they, you know, promise to do something, and then there's no follow-up. I don't know, I just, I, I don't see it as a, a probable way of land being developed. I don't think that it burders any goals of recovery as a plan, I.
So, what I'm hearing you say is a motion. Yeah, what I'm saying is that you begin on the top of page, whatever the heck it is here, fifty-six, you would get rid of B and E.
I think I can go to five.
You get to do the whole thing. Um, then you are leave, you're not telling people at all how they can provide affordable housing.
Well, I think that's somewhere else, right, but we're, no, we're not giving, I mean, this is all about, this is, uh, just some bonuses, right, just some bonuses.
That gets to a cheap, and it'll be better.
Right, and so, um.
Well, since you got rid of number four, actually, you're not giving a bonus anymore for affordable housing, so that does make that moot.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are therefore whipping less than getting rid of this in yellow at the top of fifty-six.
But boy, am I glad we figured out what offsite meant.
I, I cannot actually give you a definition of what offside, I never understood that, so.
Yeah, well, you, you and me vote.
Okay, uh, dear God, um.
Wait, did we have to vote on that or not?
No, because it, you already got rid of it, and.
Okay, yeah, implicitly we had to, I guess.
I, I thought somebody made a motion, but, yeah.
You did, you're just realized that the motion was pointless.
Okay, a moot, moot motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um. On page fifty-seven, Ernie asks, are we about how, how about abbreviated site plan approval, I'm just asking to make sure we're following the law. Um.
What went there?
What's the front of part one?
Yeah. On that abbreviated site plan.
You gotta find it.
For special, okay, all applications for special use permit, site plan approval, variance, or subdivision approval, requiring site review board or zoning board of appeals approval.
There it is, there it is.
Okay, so, we should just include abbreviated site plan.
Uh. You want to cast it, man, I think.
Right?
Where am I?
Right there, right there.
Right here, so in two, on page fifty-seven.
What?
You want to. ASPR.
Oh, they, this is requiring the agricultural statement.
No, I think this is not the right one, because normally when you highlight the comment in the right, the box becomes big in the text, and this box is still small, so I don't know if we.
I don't know where it's going to, it's supposed to be on page fifty-seven.
No, I think that's where I was going to tend, I think it was, you know, it's just, it's Ernie's question in January times about how about, if, how about if the PR.
Yeah.
And then Bill on January twelfth says, I would lean towards not requiring it.
Yeah.
That, that's the right, so let's.
Okay.
Leave that as is.
Okay, so. Um. On page sixty-one, Michelle says, this feels repetitive, perhaps saying instead, is the applicant of the non-farm, it is the responsibility of the non-farm applicant subject to approval by the review board to provide an effective buffer, and if people seem to think that's a good fix. Um, on page sixty-one, Barb says the list in B needs to be corrected. And.
Right, that's fine.
Agreement, okay. And there's another, other stuff further on, on sixty-three. Uh, I think the rest of this on sixty-five is fine. Barbs is on page sixty-seven. We just, we did that, right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yay, God, that was good.
Page sixty-three.
Page sixty-three?
Yeah, I think it's sixty-three.
What's your question about?
Dana, just above, there's something above tree cut. One time, he got the top of the stream bank prohibited. Thank you. Yeah, I'll be wondering.
It's sixty-four and it's right above that box.
Yeah, yeah. Within the repairing buffer area, limited tree cutting, forestry or vegetation damage shall be done in accordance with the forest, forest stewardship plan. It's all capitalized, so I assume there's a definition somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Prepared by the Department of Environmental Conservation. Forester who is certified by the Society of American Foresters or such accepted organization. As is later created or a cooperating consulting force. So you. Basically, if you want to cut down trees within the repairing of upper area. Um. You need to get a forester involved. You know, the last step on there, the last two things, the best man, the best practice, the live lobby. The BMP field guide. And then it goes down to the last step, the tree cutting within twenty-five feet of the town's stream bank prohibited. Um, if we're following the BMP field guide, then. Whatever the laws are in there, because I don't believe it's twenty-five feet of the town's stream bank. Students, I think we should just say. We can leave it up to the BNP field guys.
Um.
Want you to add that last tree cutting within twenty-five feet of the town's stream bank prohibited.
Ma'am, do you have more information about this section?
It, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything that Bruce said.
Bruce said in the last bullet above the box on that page.
Yep.
That um, he thinks that the tree cutting within twenty-five feet of the top of the stream bank be prohibited and. The set in the next sentence should be eliminated because he thinks we should just leave it up to the BMP field guide. He doesn't think. That that within twenty-five feet is correct.
Uh, I guess what I'll say is um. I think there, to some of the apples and oranges, I agree that, that it's, I don't, Bruce knows way more about the BMP field guide than I do. And it may say nothing about this. The prohibition on twenty-five feet of the top of the stream bank. Comes from the county recommendation. And so is not necessarily. It, part of the BMP field guy. Like I'm saying, they, they, they may be being more restrictive on purpose than the BMP field guy. But I don't have any wisdom one way or the other on that.
Okay. Bruce, are you offering that as a motion to get rid of those last two sentences?
Well, I would think if we're following the field, yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay, so Bruce is offering that as a motion. Does anyone want to second that?
Sort of question. So Bruce, does, does. You know, what if you, you have to be the field guy? I mean, I don't like, I don't know what the P are from.
Hey, Barb. Can you flatten your purse?
Thank you.
Well, I do want to watch the position. If it doesn't make sense to me that if we're gonna file the field guy. Then why do you have something else there? Well, if you mind being more reserved. Um. You wanna table that one for?
Yeah, I don't hear, hear a second. So let's table that and Bruce, would you look that up and then send us all an email? Okay.
Let me compare it. Yeah.
Okay. I'm trying to see if there's other things. Um, this is on page sixty-seven. I think we've finished that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, well, so you just go by one. Again, this, you know, so this is guidance for Nan though. A couple of sections of the document aren't formatted like the other sections, like this one that came out of the, you know, the, the task force report. Do we want Nan to go through the work of making sure it's lettered and numbered the same way? Like, is usually. After section six point two point one, it would say A, not one. Hmm. Or we'll leave it like this.
I don't know how difficult the job that is. I know for me, it would be like having all of my teeth extracted.
I think, I think the reason that it changed um was because this is a. This is six point two point one. You know, so if it's. It, so if we had, like, the A would have been A, building placement and design. B entrances and for some reason along the way, it got. It got changed to a subsection, so.
Well, it was because this document was imported and it was formatted differently. So that's this question of. Is it really a horrible job to go through and reform all of this or should we just set it up and live with it?
Um, no, if you, if you want those ABCs, I can make them ABCs.
Or if you can turn the rest of the document into the six point two point one point, 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 point.
No, that would be like pulling your teeth out.
Okay, so Nan is gonna deal with this.
Thank you, boy.
So if you want the subsections. With. Capital A, capital B, et cetera, right?
Yes.
We just want it to look like the rest of the document.
Yeah, okay.
Gee, can we go back to the item about BMP field guide?
Yes.
And resolve it. Uh, the BMP field guide does not mention anything about. Um, tree cutting, you know, with this, you know, in terms of related to the stream bank like this or. Uh, tree cutting with BMP field guide spends a lot of time on or things like um. Skid trails, um, you know, using straw bottles, using um. You know, like fires on the ground to prevent erosion, stream crossings, you know, kind of how you use forestry equipment. And how you approach the land. With that equipment, um, but it doesn't, it doesn't talk about the two issues in these two sentences or those three part about.
Okay. So um. Hearing that. Do we want to try to, um, I think Bruce is suggesting that we remove the last two sentences because it's not in the BMP manual. Do you want to go ahead with that, Bruce? No. Okay, so Bruce's, your bet has become moot. Thank you. Thanks for looking that up. Um. I have no idea where we are now. We're on the page where there were photos.
That's right.
Here. So we're changing this. We're changing um.
Format.
The format in there. We're um.
Numbers to letters.
Numbers to letters, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, beyond, you know.
And.
You get six point. Yeah, digit, point, digit, and then everything below that, it becomes letters, right?
Yeah, we, we could have a six point two, but we don't have a six point two point one, six point two point three. And I think this is the one where we had like six point five point one through six point five point. Fourteen or something, right? That was all the different.
Yeah, I'll put that some point, but that's okay.
Okay.
So you're, you're keeping, let me just make sure I got this straight. You're keeping those subsection numbers, but you're changing the items under each subsection to. ABC instead of one, two, three.
Um, I think, no, scroll up a little bit and then that's fine. We should do whatever's done the rest of the document, but I think. Where we have six, we go down to six point two. That was perfect. Sorry, sorry about that. I made you go too far. Okay. So section six point two design, that's great. And then. The subsections in that, I think you were using A. In other sections like an article four, five, three.
So then you, you wanna just change the section six point two point one to A?
Yes, I think.
All right, now, and I, and now I remember the reason why I didn't do that way. Do it that way is because. In your table of contents, then, all of these specific things will go away.
Oh.
Because the way table contents is constructed, you're saying?
Yes, so A, you know, we don't have ABCs. Titles anywhere else in the document in the table of contents, but I thought that. Someone might want to see, oh, what is the roofing requirement or what is the, you know, the canopy requirement? And so having that in the table of contents was. Beneficial, so that's, I think that's one of the reasons. If you get, I mean, if you want to just do ABCs, that's fine, but they will now go away from the table of contents.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that the table of contents could be shorter. I, I, I don't agree that it should be shorter. I think this gets to the point that um. You know, the bill added to the agenda about trying to make this all as accessible and understandable as we can, especially for those. Uh, topics that are going to be of most interest to people reading this. And so. I personally agree with Anne's approach of um. Using the section numbers as she did.
I agree with Barb. I, so we have a split here. Who wants to go to where we go to the previous format but lose stuff in the uh, in the.
Well, okay, so let's, before we get there.
Okay.
But what happens, I mean, I understand it could be a, there's always a mystery to ask, but are, could we improve the document by. Going through and reformatting the rest of this stuff so that those things. Are cited in the table of contents as well.
I think if you look at the table of contents, um. In the previous articles.
Maybe, for instance, uh, five point two. Would have. A five point two point one development standards for the agricultural rural district.
But that whole section don't, it's only two pages.
Guidelines for the.
Yeah.
Standards, you have standards and guidelines. Okay, so, yeah, so that, yeah, so then it gets into. That probably turns into development standards and guidelines. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was my, you know, I don't like the, the, the changes in the whole document, but I do not want to carry this.
Yeah. I guess this is a question I could not answer without looking at the whole document again and looking at table of contents and. I'm, I'm, I'm almost willing to do that, but I, I think in lieu of that, I'm gonna. Be comfortable with us leaving it in its somewhat. You know, mishmashed. State that it isn't now, uh, for the very reasons that Nan. Did it that way. And I, in the meantime, will be thinking hard about whether. At some point. When this is turned over to the town board, they don't hire an editor to. Make all those number changes.
Yes.
So just as an example, um, if you look on page sixty-two and section five point three. Um. So section five point three has a nice title. And then items A, B, and C, which are underneath it. Are all like, you know, one or few sentence items. Um, and they have no title associated with them.
Right.
So we would have to go through and add titles to all of the letters. Within the entire document. Which is insane for a one-sentence letter.
So.
But, but Barb, what do you really feel about this?
Let me tell you. I, uh, I feel that what, what Barb, what Nan did makes a tremendous amount of sense because. I think the table of contents is important. Uh, and I realize that this, you know, and also we are not seeking perfection. We are seeking.
Whoa.
Preliminary document that. That we have a public hearing on. And if.
Phil sounds exploding. Wait a minute.
I do not, God does perfection, I do not. That's my feeling about it. Yeah, um, you're gonna, we're trying to punish you, but. Okay, so. So that's, you know, because this is not the actual final document. You will have a preliminary document, you will have a public hearing. If we want to change things afterwards, we can. And then we give it to the town board. Who is responsible for making a final document? And they get paid for, that is enormous amounts of money. Okay. So now we're on to page. Uh. Yes, and sixty-eight, and there's a couple of things that are in the comments about we need a. You know, what various things are like a. A caption and we, and they're all in there. So I don't think there's anything very exciting in here.
Or a catalog of areas that's used.
Right? Uh. Barb on page. Seventy-five says. Write things grammatically with a couple of points and everyone says, yes, that's good. Um, and also further down. Uh.
Oh. Well, yeah, Nan can read what I wrote there, no big deal.
Yeah, I think this is all fine. These are the caps and. Such.
Okay, oh, it's a, there's one that I've had, um. Which is uh, section six point five point two.
Give me a page if you can.
Number five. Uh, number three.
Okay.
One accessory apartment within an existing structure and one freestanding accessory dwelling shall be allowed per lot. As the, in my readings, I, I had always understood that was kind of the war.
I, I actually think this was what we said.
Yeah, I agree. That's what, that's how I remember it also.
Okay with that, I'll just do.
Yeah, I think that we were, I think we said. That way you get two mothers-in-law on the same property.
Which is only fair.
Yeah, one in the house and one in the backyard.
Every year they change places.
Or somebody moves.
We don't have to put that in the zoning law.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, capitalizations.
I can't help it, caps just pop out at me.
Yeah.
Um, Ernie. Um, let's see, this is on page seventy-eight, um. I am unclear as to how or even why we apply conservation subdivision rules to multi-family developments. Can we discuss this?
So this is not to do, so this is really using the lot layout. Um, so what you're saying is that you're gonna have. Multiple buildings on a development like. Boysville cottages. That those buildings aren't on their own lot, but they can follow the lot layout, the, the, the. They can follow the layout. Guidelines. In the same way, even though they're not creating separate lots. So if you go, you have to look at six point five point fifteen to see what those are.
It is.
But you don't. Have to. Provide a conservation area? I mean, or do we still have to do the fifty percent? For conservesment? Or the public, or is it just you just have to meet the. The, the, the general. Principles of.
Um. Well, I think that it was, well, first of all, I see that now we have to change this because it's gonna have to be more than four structures. Cause you changed that rule.
Uh, what?
Um.
So it says multi-family developments having more than three, oh, wait, sorry, three structures, sorry.
Right.
So I think that the, and I don't remember. If we had talked about this or what, I don't remember, but. The um. The no, yes, the notion is that. Um, a major development that has lots of. Buildings. Would have to meet all of those, you know, you would have to have open space and. Um. All of those other things that were met. I think that we had talked about this before, but I don't, I don't.
I just want to make sure that this actually. Causes that, since, you know, it seems it's. So, um, so I guess that, you know. Can we look at the section of that? Or let me look at, what section does it reference? Six point five point one five, that's just the next one.
Conservation subdivision. So in reviewing and looking at this, it's really. I, I think the, the way it, what we, we were trying to get at was that when you have a multi. Structure development. Um. It's really not a lot layout. You want the building layout. To be done in the same manner as a conservation subdivision, so that they're clustered, there's open space, that there's, you know, the lot is looked at from an environmental perspective and the buildings placed strategically. To create the, you know, the best development. To create the, you know, the best development and, and the best environmental protection, so. I, I would say that the lot layout is confusing because we're really not laying out lots in a multi-family development. You're really citing the structures.
Yeah.
Should we change the wording there?
Yeah, it's just that, you know, when you're laying out lots, you know, you'd be, the, you know, metrics are all kind of clear, but you're just kind of letting. Things exist on a piece of land. I guess we still have to have a certain area that's put into conservation.
Right.
The septic area or the dog park or, you know, whatever it is that. Holds that land open. So I just.
Yes, I, I think a more accurate way would be to say multi-family developments having more than. Um, three, having more than three structures containing residential units shall have. Those. Or such structures placed on the lot pursuant to conservation subdivision sex, section six point five point fifteen.
Even though they don't reach the threshold.
Right. Well, so, so right, so it, you're right, it's a little bit different threshold because you could build four duplexes. Right, and you wouldn't trigger major subdivisions, so you wouldn't do conservation design. So we're saying, yeah, that it, that since a multi-family house could have four units or three units, but you know, that it's a little bit different. Where, where we are indeed placing a, a stricter threshold on a multi-family. You know, four unit above building.
No, 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 this is three, if this says multi-family developments having more than three structures, not units.
I understand, but each of those structures could have. Up to eight units according to our zoning law.
Correct.
Or as few as probably two or three, right? Um. So I think that's the reason why, or why it's a different threshold, and I'm okay with that, because indeed, those three structures could house twenty-four families. And so it becomes sort of a major subdivision, even though they didn't strictly meet the major subdivision provision of. You know, essentially more than four structures in a, you know, on small lots in a four-year, five-year period, so, three-year period, sorry. So I, I'm okay with it as is, and I agree with Nan that it probably needs to talk about how those structures are placed in the land, but that's. I'm, I'm good with it the way it is.
I, I'm good with it too. Nan, do you think we need to change any of the wording about this?
Uh, I think I just wanna change, um, shall have lots placed. Um, it should be structures, so I think just a little tweaking. And I think that it would clarify things if I go back to section six point five point fifteen. And, and find the specific subsection that relates to the location of the structures on the site, so. I, I, I'll tweak that just to add more detail, so everyone knows what that means.
Good, uh, after this, there's a whole lot of stuff about capitalization. And then we get to page. I think ninety. Let me see. Yes, page ninety. I know. So there's things in the site plan review box, um. Ernie says, not entirely accurate, there are lots of things that go through ASPR. I suggest a revision to include smaller projects that don't require a public hearing. Like projects within the water overlay, so that's in the, the. Reader's aid box, so we all kind of happy with that. Bill says that that's needs rewarding, but I'm not enamored of the smaller projects. And we're not even that near to Valentine's Day, um. Um, okay, uh. Yeah, we're looking at the Reader's Aid box. I'm seriously considering taking up drinking.
Yeah, well. Certainly okay with your rewording, Bill.
All right.
Okay, good. So, um. Let's see, up here. Ernie says, um, this is on page ninety-one, the first sentence is awkward. It is titled uses subject to, this is C. Uh, and then has an exemption. So. Bill says he thinks that's okay. Michelle thinks it's okay. Ernie thinks it was. Okay, um. Yes, you said forget it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Now we're into page two where Michelle says, didn't we change this to three years? And we did, indeed. This was about, um.
Discontinuance.
Discontinuance of existing things, and I believe we did change it to three years.
Yeah, and elsewhere it is three years. I, I noticed in another place.
I think it's just a. So seven point two, we're gonna change that to three years. Okay, um. Then on page ninety-four. Bruce says. Underwater supply, do we need to add definitions for groundwater and surface water? We have a definition for aquifer.
I mean, good question, to be honest, I wouldn't have thought we would need a definition for aquifer. Those are sort of scientific, well-defined terms, but. You know, they don't have any, any special different meaning in this document than they do outside of it, but, uh, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think we need a special definition. I think aquifer is in just because.
Well, aquifer is in there probably because it came out of some other law that Nan was bringing into the zoning law, and therefore all that stuff got dumped into our definitions.
It was page ninety-four? It was your page ninety-four, it said. Uh, it's actually page ninety-two in my thing, so. I think it's. It's section seven point four, I think, specific standards and considerations. And number four is water supply, is that where you're looking at?
If, if those are well-defined scientific terms, I don't think we need them, because.
But Barb can probably speak to that better than I can. I just believe that, you know. There's a general understanding of groundwater and surface water.
I, I think that's correct.
Okay. Um, we actually now get to skip to page one hundred and three. Um, where Ernie says, it, it's something again about different formatting, and then he says that's the major, and he's living with it. Um, and then this is where we have seven point seven. And we go on to. Seven point nine, so seven point nine needs to be seven point eight, so we just want.
Yeah, and, and Nan said she fixed that already in, in her, in her word version.
Great, um, and I am at the end of the comments now.
What?
In here. Um, yeah.
Wait, there was, there was one I pointed out that there was a mistake with numbering, but maybe Nan figured that.
The one we're just talking about. Seven point.
No.
Oh, no.
No, that, that, that was something different.
Yeah, it was a list, but it, it's, it doesn't need discussion. I think Nan would pick it out.
Okay, I think there is something about the Reader's Aid box on page one seventeen. Oh, it's about the font size and with, and yeah, okay. Nan can deal with that, and we are, we are out of comments.
Yeah, one other thing that we didn't talk about this. Thought we'd been here, um. There are, uh, multiple family, uh.
Yep.
Relations, we are saying, um, no more than eight. Units in a building.
Right.
And I just bring this up. Just because, you know, we have an example of building that is larger than the units, I don't know how many units. Well, matter is. Um, but a lot more than eight. Um, and I think that. Just wanted to talk about a little bit because, you know, as. Our community ages, uh, there will be more and more call for these sorts of developments. There's a very nice one down on Creamery Road. Towards the W G Parkford, um. You know, and they're. Very large buildings, parking lots, um, their residential users, and. Both seem entirely out. The character more. Our channel, so I just. Having it operate is pretty strict. Going out there just.
Um, I, I agree, I think I actually mentioned Fountain Manor recently, and we sort of said something about hamlets. And I said that Manor is in a hamlet, and I have no other recollection of what I said there.
Yeah.
Um, um. So. As it, as it were now, if somebody wanted to build that, it would be a variance. It would be somebody coming and applying for variance, right?
But, well, no, they could build, they could do that, or yes, it's probably more costly, they would have to break. The one large building up into, you know, four buildings to get thirty-two units in four unit buildings. Which is the intent?
Um. I guess I will say that in a lot of senior housing. Uh, and, um, usually places like Fountain Manor also take people who have. Um, some, some, uh, physical disability, often. Um, the concept is that you have a place of gathering that wouldn't require somebody to go outside considering our weather. Um. Sort of like, think about Kendall, it's very interesting, Kendall, when it was originally built. Everybody told them they wanted their own separate space outside of the main building, and now everybody wants to move into the main building.
Is that right?
Yeah, so, and which is why they enlarged the main building substantially. Because people don't wanna go outside in the, in the, to, to work, to get to a meal. Or to get to, um. You know, or an activity. So, um. So, is the suggestion of doing something like adding something to the use table that would say. Um, senior, senior housing, I think it's very important in the senior housing facility that it be somewhere that it's on a bus line. Otherwise you have people completely isolated. And, um. Not able to get out ever. Um, so I, for me, that would essentially be. Uh, a couple of our hamlets that have, um. You know, it's, it's Lady Real Springs and it's Brooktondale and Center Brooktondale. And not much of anything else.
Well, what about Beesmer?
Yeah, maybe Beesmer. Um, are you suggesting that they might wanna put into the use table? Um, senior housing and say that that's allowable. Uh, to have, um, a unit of something of. Twenty-four units, for instance.
Well, I wouldn't say that that would go in the use table, but that could go in the section, um, six point five. I mean, anything you wanna say about that is, is section six point five point fourteen. That's where it says there shall be no more than eight dwelling units per individual structure. So I wouldn't put it in the use table, but I would put it in the, whatever you wanna say about it in that section.
Right, so, so, so one could put language in six point five point, whatever is thirteen, fourteen, allowing larger. Unit sizes for senior housing. What about, can you also restrict it to s- specific hamlets in that section? I think that's probably what, what.
Yeah, sure.
Nah, you would turn it into the use table, and it would just be a separate line. Just the way we did with the, the.
But that doesn't get it. We have in, uh, um. Six point five point fourteen D is says no more than eight units per individual structure.
Right.
So having it in the use table doesn't change that.
Right. Um.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, um, revise section six point five point one four. Which is titled multi-family structures or developments. Um, item D, which is titled maximum building size and density. Um, item four, which talks about, um. There shall be no more than eight dwelling units. On item four, I'd like to add the wording, except for senior housing. There shall be no more than eight dwelling units per individual structure for a lot. And then add a sentence that, um. Senior housing is allowed to have a maximum of, uh, twenty-four dwelling units per individual structure. Uh, no, and then, um. And then it would be, uh, the allowed districts for, I mean, man could put words in it this, but. The allowed districts would be those that we were just talking about, which would be. Uh, Beesmer, Brooktondale, Brooktondale Center. Laterville.
Right, so, so it'd be something like senior housing in these districts. Could have up to twenty-four units per structure. And that would be it. Senior housing in other districts would still conform to the eight unit limit. Correct?
Yes.
I'm, I'm seconding that.
Uh, because all hamlets aren't, um, accessible for public transportation, and now then you're probably not for the foreseeable future. Um, hamlets like Speedsville and like Caroline's, uh, uh.
Yeah, they're not, there, there's no public transportation there.
Or it could just be only allowed where. Public transportation is available. Only allowed in hamlets where.
No, I mean, I think we have to specify the hamlets, like, you know.
Yeah, what happens, uh, PK, a discontinued service or something.
Have to amend the zoning law, but.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure the one. Yeah, well, and, and because it doesn't, it becomes kind of a refuge for people of a certain needs.
Right.
Right. It's pretty, and, I don't, but I would be anywhere over there.
Right, I mean, the other way to go is, in, I think this is, you know, in terms of, do we specify hamlets or not, is. Then she allowed the free market to do that part. They might not locate on a place without adequate public transport if they thought that was not. You know. Profitable. Um, you know, I don't, I'm okay either way.
Um, that's, well, that, this is what the barbs offered and I seconded. Is there any other? All in favor of Barb's, um, motion? Say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Bruce is opposed. It passes, okay. It is now nine ten, and I am going to say that we have talked through this, Nan has to make a lot of little changes, Michelle.
Didn't, didn't we have to talk about trailer parks?
Not that I know of, where are you?
Uh, oh, I thought there was something about the, um, the, you know, Caroline has a local law. And that we had to discuss trailer parks in some way. I'd have to go back to, to the email.
Oh, yeah, so, so what that is, is that. There is an existing law that governs mobile home parks. And like the other local laws, we re- we reference, like, you know, so see. Whatever local law, whatever of nineteen ninety for, you know, um, adult uses. So, right now, what we have in the zoning kind of conflicts with what's in local, I think it was local. Law one of nineteen eighty-six. So, um, my suggestion was that we. Um, we add into the, um. Until you re- you rescind that law. I mean, you could rescind that law and then keep the zoning the same. Or you could keep, so the mobile home ordinance that you have actually is town board approval. If there was no review board then. So it's really out of sync with everything we have, but it is on the books. It is, it is your mobile home law. For mobile home park law. So we could, um. You know, make in a new line in the the use table that says mobile home parks. See local law one of two thousand and, or nineteen eighty six and add a definition. For mobile home park that matches what's in the nineteen eighty six law. It's it's awkward because we don't really like to use the word mobile home park anymore, but. It is, it is what it is. I mean, so unless. Unless the the zoning commission wants to recommend that. That that we keep the law the way it is now. Um, and that when the zoning law gets adopted, they rescind local, they also simultaneously rescind. Local law one of nineteen eighty six.
I I would prefer that, and the reason is we already have in our report a number of things that we're saying to the board that if you pass this law. You will have to think about these other laws. And that to me makes more sense because as we've gone through this process and thought about mobile homes. I think we didn't know that was on the books. Is that my memory? We just didn't, it wasn't on somewhere.
Well, there there's also, there's near state laws that pertain to mobile home parks and it's all things about. Regardless of how much space in between units and, and you know, just. How they have to be maintained and all that. So we need to reference the near state law as a minimum because that's a big part of what. Our town law has is the near state regulations in.
Okay, so let's say that we do that in the. In the text, we reference the law and then we put into the report. Along with the other laws that we have listed there, that they will have to, um.
Well, I would say if you're going to recommend that they rescind the law, then we don't reference it.
Right. There 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 were two things there, Jean. There were two options for us. One was to treat it like the other laws and say. Town board, you should revisit this soon. The other option Jean gave us was to, as I Nan gave us, was since we have indeed. Sort of dealt with housing in the zoning law. Is to say that law is rescinded when the zoning law is passed. That would be the town board would have to. Affirmatively decide that. So which is, I think, Jean, you were saying, let's just tell them to update the law.
Well, I don't, I don't think they, I don't know if they have to update it or rescind it, but they have to consider it. They have to consider that there's a conflict and we could just say that in it. In our report and, um, what I.
But in in that case, we need to make reference to that law in the report because it's the, it it is still on the books. And that's what Nan Nan is saying. Either you say. It gets rescinded as zoning is passed, or you have to refer to that law, I think, reference that law in the zoning. Am I right, Nan?
Yes.
When I was, that's what I was trying to say in the report. What Bernie, what what Ernie was saying that is in the. In the zoning law itself, where trailer parks are referenced, we should reference the New York State law.
I mean, if if. We were to ask them to rescind the the town's law. Then we would want to reference the New York State law in the zoning regulations. So those laws are not lost. In the mix of that. Because those are specific to those sorts of developments.
Right. Argue the other side, which is that we actually should. Have that law rescinded as zoning is passed rather than have them revisit it. And the reason is that. The other laws, like subdivision law, they will be revised, reconsidered. Public hearing, all external to the zoning law. But if we leave the mobile home park law on the books, it has to be referenced in the zoning law or ought to be. And then when it's rescinded, we have to go in, you know, a year from now and then have another public hearing in the zoning law. Which seems a lot of extra work for no good reason. And I would rather just have them rescind the law as part of the process of passing zoning, just like the site, existing site plan law will be repealed. As part of the process of passing zoning. So that would be what I suggest. And as as Ernie says, make reference to the state law therefore, so that safety net is there in in the law.
Okay, so that's the, so your bill is making this motion that we.
Yes, I am.
And I heard that motion and would someone else like to, uh, second that motion? Barb? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. So let's say where we are on this then now. We have finished it. Nan is going to make a bunch of. Of updates and changes to it. Um. Do you all feel you need to read it again?
Yeah.
Yep.
Let us all read it again. And let us, Nan, when do you think you can make those changes?
So do you want, I guess, one question is, do you want to see a redline version of all of these? Or do you want to just a clean copy that, you know, that you can read from beginning to end? What what, well, I mean, just because there's an extra step in. Accepting all of the changes and making sure the format is right. So. Either way is all right, but. I'm gonna need a couple days. I mean, there's a lot of kiki changes to find. There's a lot of stuff in there.
I think you should take the, you should take the time you need now, as far as I'm concerned. I don't, you know.
Yeah, it's.
This is the time not to mess up, right?
Right, right. You guys all took an incredible amount of time to go to that length of review. Um, so I. I can work on it this week, but, um, I think I need. All of the rest of this week to to fit it in. So, um, I I'll try and have it. You know, over, you know, the weekend or by Monday, the twenty third.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, right.
That's like a week. That's that gives me three days this week to work on it.
Okay, let me, um, I'll discuss the timing here. If we, um, if Nan could get us this to us by Monday. Could people read it enough that we could have a meeting perhaps on? Either something like Saturday, the twenty eighth or Tuesday, the thirty first.
Thirty first.
Well. Okay. Tuesday, the thirty first, I'm gonna send out something in the morning. At which point I think that you could just adopt it and pass the resolution and set up the meetings for the. Um, public hearing. I've also sent you all the information about. Um, the public hearing and people that may have said some things need to be changed in the, um. The thing that we have to put in newspapers. And I have to check that with the attorney more than anybody else. So I will work on that. If we can meet on the thirty first and this is ready. We could have this, um, posted. By the end of that week and then we. Weeks to have a public hearing. Which could be on something like. Yes, and we'll do that, um, on the thirty first, which we. I'd like to spend ten minutes tonight on it too. And then we could meet somewhere in the thirteenth and the fourteenth and the fifteenth. Um, I think we've had a problem because the public report is not in the format of the PDF and we couldn't make comments on it. But there are several things that have comments on it. Um, and it's not nearly as long. Um. So.
Well, you can add comments into the word version. I mean, not the, those of you who read it so far have commented in that way.
Right, but if we, they're not all connected somewhere. They're not all on one.
Well, I think most of them got connected because we wound up doing it sequentially because of our schedules, right? So it daisy chained from from Barb to you, to me, to Michelle. And then Ernie and Bruce had written comments that they wanted to share tonight.
Okay, so, um, we have several things that we said we would do tonight. We would also think about these two things that, um. That, um, we were adding to the agenda. So let's see where we are on adding these to the agenda and then we can, perhaps we can by email. Finish, um, all the comments we have for the for the report. And, um, and maybe we can take five minutes tonight to do that. And extend a little bit. So, Bill, um, your suggestion is, are there other readers aid boxes that needed to be added?
Right.
And are there ones that you are suggesting?
The only one, again, I really sort of thought about was, gee, we, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the water resources overlay. So should we take? Again, sort of like there's a couple different intro paragraphs from that white paper that could be turned into reader's aid box. If people thought that would be helpful. And I haven't really taken the time to like go through the rest of the document to see if there's anything else. We have. Brief readers aid boxes at the beginning, but I'm just wondering, does anyone have something back there that, geez, yeah, this section really could use. A layman's explanation. So I'm tossing it out there for general discussion, but I. Am willing, and I don't have a lot of spare time right now, but I'm willing to write that one on the water resources overlay if folks think that would be helpful to have. Because I, you know, I guess because I'm offering, because I don't think it'll be too much work.
Well, I think that what up on the website that explains the water resources overlay does a really good job of that, but I guess the question is, should be included in the. Um, in the law itself. What do people think?
Still willing to do it. Yourself out, man.
I'm just gonna be a couple paragraphs. It's not gonna be, well, I always fake myself out and, but I'll try not to make it very long.
Okay. That's one. And then the other thing that you wanted to discuss, Bill.
Well, before we get to that, is there anything else in the in the document that people think needs a reader's aid box? And I'm not offering to write those. Okay, this is gonna be. But, you know, if we think we need more work on it, we should do those.
You know, I guess what I think is it's very hard for me to say and maybe for us to say because. We have been over this document so often. But if this is something that comes up at the public hearing and someone says. I don't understand this section, then that would be a reasonable thing.
Okay, that's a good point.
Anyone else?
No. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Me. Um, I had a question, Jean. If if we make, uh, changes. To the law after the public hearing, do we then have to have another?
No. You're required to have one public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I I guess I'm just raising a. A question if. The goal here is for you to present the draft of a law to the town board. I guess I find myself asking. About the, um, efficiency of them spending all of this much more time. In doing readers aid boxes, which are in essence. Not the law. If you hear what I'm saying. I mean. I'm getting the impression that you're very, very close to being finished. With the draft of the law. In a reader's aid box is something completely different.
And yeah, Jim, I'm not suggesting creating anything that will cause delay. Um, as Jean said, we could hold off. Only add this one because I can have that done tomorrow and and Nan can insert it. Um, and then if others appear to be required because the public is having a real hard time understanding this. That we could make sure that got done in between our public hearing and. You guys getting the final report.
Or we can even add it to the to the report itself and say. Uh, the public is, we've heard that the public would like more readers aid boxes on these subjects. For instance.
Yeah, and that that's exactly the purpose of why we're, the preliminary report is the subject of the hearing. And then you write a final report. So if the public says we need more readers aid boxes. That could be part of your recommendation in your final report.
Uh, and then, um, the second subject that Bill brought up was, was there anything in addition?
This is their public outreach and and this is motivated by, again, a desire, you know. Uh, I, you know, heard the speaker, you know, uh, at privilege floor talking about the fact that we. You know, it's right, you know, we've spent a lot of time and work on this. That's not enough reason to definitely pass zoning. But I actually definitely do want to pass this because I think it's a darn good document. Um, I think it really speaks well to the needs of Caroline and desire of many of the residents. But what I want to make sure is that we've done. Good outreach so that the the community understands what the document is, that they aren't just turned off by this hundred and thirty page dense document that, oh, my God, I can't, you know, I can't. Grapple with that. So. In that spirit of wanting to, you know, do everything I can to make sure this actually does come to fruition, that we get public support. The question is, are there other resources we should try to provide? Again, this is motivated, as I said, by. Comments by Milton Tam and and Don Barber and and other a few other conversations I've had. And, you know, this is not something I expect us to sink tons of time into, and it's something I can put a little time into, but other folks would have to do some parts of it. But if we thought we needed some kind of. Slideshow, you know, narrated slideshow that would. You know, give the overview of, say, hey, you know, because words like use table, they wouldn't have meant anything to me two years ago, right? So if someone has not gone to one of our public information sessions, just something to help tell them. Look, if you're wondering about, you know, what kinds of things you can do and what parts of the town, that's the use table in in article three. And, you know, and just something that went through quickly in five minutes. Here are the articles. Here's what each of them means. If you want to learn more about that, go to that article. And then, as a companion piece. Snip up some of the videos that we've got or create a few new ones. For those who are willing to do that, that help explain, you know, spend three or four minutes on each article or two minutes on each article like Nan did in the public information session. That's more work. May not be what anybody wants to do. But that's what I'm asking is, A, is it worth me? Making that first three to five minute thing that's sort of an overview of everything? And is it worth me just? Editing the video of Nan speaking at the privilege, uh, at the, um, information session. And.
Barb, um, I'm wondering if we have any, uh, use data on how your really wonderful water resource. Overlay, um, has been, you know, to what extent that that video has been. Used. I was really expecting it to go viral on TikTok, but I have. So I don't know.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. You know, you know, we can provide these things and they get buried in a website and no one knows about them, right? I mean, it's it's true. Uh, and so that's why I don't want, you know, I I'm not gonna. Move heaven and earth to get this done, uh, if if there's not a. You know, it's not gonna have an impact.
Yeah, I I have not heard a buzz in the community about it. I think it was a wonderful video, um, but, you know, without use statistics. About how that's been viewed and that has been a hot topic. So. If people were interested in seeing a video where they learn about it, that would have been the mechanism, but. I don't know, Mark, could we look at any web use statistics to see how many hits there were other than those of us on the zoning commission who. Tore over it and bonded over Bill's lovely video?
Um, I guess I think we have done a remarkable job of public education. We've had nine public meetings. The town board held listening section sessions. We've had, as you saw in the report, a huge long list. The two hundred and fifteen questions and answers that have been answered. I, I.
I'm not convinced it's gonna be used though.
Yeah, no, that that this is why I tossed it out that I'm totally happy that it gets shut down because I'm actually pretty busy right now. I just want to make sure we all thought about it.
I I guess I thought about it and I think, I mean, I do believe that there are people who have read it. I know people have talked to me about it. I think there's a large number of people who are never gonna read it and who are. I'm very happy to elect public officials and see what they do. And then if they don't like what the public official do, they. Like other public officials. That's kind of how we work as a nation. Because we do not have direct democracy. So that's what I think.
Yeah, and and you know, again, you know, my underlying concern is that this this. Effort that we, that that is a good document, not fail simply for for lack of people's understanding, but it is, you. It's hard to get information, you know, out there. It really is.
And you can't force people to to take.
I mean, the guy who you get to be great, the more people you can get, they'll respond to their offer.
Yeah, I I just, I can't, I mean, if people really wanted to learn something, it's stuff is there. So that's all. So thank you. So let's talk about the report. Um. How about we do this? Let's see if I can, um, go through the report and look at people's comments and try to make changes in it. And send it out to people this week. What do you want to do?
Wait, wait, wait. Nan made a lot of those changes. What do you?
So Nan?
Yeah, I I I have to put in the the update to the table that you did.
Well, I, well, we haven't discussed, I mean, I'd like it if you did that because that was a lot of work too, but no one said they liked that yet.
Oh, yeah, I I've made, yeah, I'm pretty much have made all of the changes that everyone that I got except. I think Ernie and Bruce, I've already incorporated everything that was sent to me except for that table that you did today, yesterday or today.
Right. So I um, also today sent an email out to everyone, but mostly to you and Nan, because there was a few questions that left, like where were these signs, for example? So I answered that question.
Right, right.
And so that is, I think, all straightforward stuff. I would, I will share my screen for the table I sent out, unless people don't need to see it. I would just, I think we should vote on whether we want this kind of the table or what Nan had. Um, and it needs some work to finish it and I'm, and I frankly would need some help to get it finished. Because there's a couple bigger topics I don't have time to deal with.
Yeah, I saw you put that out, but I did not have time to read it because something else I'm doing. So can you put that up?
Yep, I certainly can. All right. So. You guys should be seeing this table now, I hope, and I can, you know. I'll make it a little bit bigger. Let's see. It's a little bit bigger at least. All right, so the main difference is um. I have inserted specific section references. And again, this is. Again, sort of accessibility, rather than saying, oh, you know, we have stuff in Article Four. Well, Article Four was kind of big, so. This is just to try to say more specifically, where are these tied? So comprehensive plan point here, specific section here. Some places it gets hard. Now, I wasn't able, for example, for the purpose statements to find. Uh, uh, that concretely in in affordable housing, for example. I may just have missed it. Um, the yellow is stuff where I added stuff that Nan didn't have or I substantially rewarded what she had. Um, because maybe, you know, I just want people to make sure to take a most careful look at that. And sometimes it gets a little um, wonky, like, you know, in terms of environmental stuff. Nan was able to say basically, you know, addressed in site plan. And then I went ahead and found specific sections, but you know, it is kind of wordy. I mean, we could just say is addressed in site plans such as section seven, three, seven, four, seven, six. Or as I did it. I sort of say what happens in each section of the site plan. So I admit that's a little wordy and longer than maybe needs to be.
Very important thing. I think this is a very important thing, both for the board and in case. Um, if there's any future. Legal issues.
All right, well, then there's a few things that I I punted on, like rural character, yeah, I, it's because environment almost killed me yesterday, but. Uh, rural character preservation throughout documents, so we need to track that down and I just wasn't up for it last night. And there's a few other things like that that need tracking down. So I would. You know. I don't know if you want to test this. To Nan or somebody else on the zoning commission to finish it.
People, I hope people will add to this.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Well, I could send this table around. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, can you send it as a PDF?
Uh. What do you want? Is it, I don't see, you want a PDF that will then get shared?
Okay, maybe it says something that people can comment on.
Right, right, well.
It's a word document.
Right, a word document can be commented on, and that's what this is. That's why I'm confused is, it sounds like I need to do something different when I thought we could comment on this.
That's fine.
Okay, I will send this around to everybody. I think I did already. I think I'll do it again.
Okay. I think that sounds great.
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing.
At the report, um. I really um, want to thank Nan for. Uh, we spent some, a lot of time on the phone together, you know, listing things that we'd all done. Mark remembered a few other things, others have remembered other things. Uh, it's, I think, very comprehensive and I'm pretty happy with the report.
Can I ask Jean one thing? Sorry. So um, if Phil's willing to stay a little longer. You know, what we haven't heard is anything that Ernie or Bruce's comments on the report, because I've seen comments from the rest of you. Would it be appropriate to give them some time now as as a group so we could hear what they had to say?
I don't have anything important. I'm just gonna add a couple of things, you know, and I can do that.
Great.
Okay.
There's different things here.
Well, is that something that'd be better for you to give to Jean and she can somehow get it to Nan? I mean, how how, Chris, how do you communicate this to to Nan?
Don't know. If he's gonna read it, he should sit over here so everybody can hear it.
You know, it would be really nice if you could.
These, are these like typo kind of things, Bruce? Are they disagreements with what's written?
Yeah, some of it I disagree on and some of it's just checked out.
Could we make a copy of Bruce's notes for me and then I could look at them and send them on to Nan? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that tonight. So we'll make a copy of Bruce's notes. Well, if I have questions, we'll call it. And um, that seems fine. Okay.
And Ernie, you're gonna send something over?
Okay. Good, and then I can, we can send it out to everyone who can get to. That would be handy. Okay. That sounds great. Um. So we're gonna need, I wish, I wish that we could make two weeks fly by, but we have to read this once again. And um, and when we get it from Nan, I'm gonna set a date because I don't want to go through this entire thing again. I want us to come in and be able to say it's late. Um, that night if we can. And set times for the public hearing. For the public hearing itself. Um, I will send you out things, ideas that I have um, about that. And we will be, we'll have to uh, get ahold of the fire department and do all that. Okay, um. I did, and you also with the attorney have written basically saying that we um. We just need to be very sure. He was suggesting four minutes, up to four minutes a person.
I I'll correct you there, Jean. He said four to five minutes, perhaps longer for those who have stopped. So I don't think he said up to four minutes. And I actually would recommend five minutes.
I said up to four minutes because I want people to be able to talk. He also said that if people are just sort of saying the same things. Over and over and over again, that. It's perfectly reasonable to not feel that you have to have another meeting. Um. Yeah.
And you clearly indicate airing on the side of letting everyone have their say. I mean, you know, basically we have in past town he- hearings. You know, I admit. Eventually you get to the hundredth person who's saying exactly the same thing you've heard fifty times, but air on the side of allowing lots of time for the hearing.
I don't know how you say everyone can have four minutes except this person who has fifteen minutes. I just don't think that makes sense to me. I think.
Yeah, I I agree with that.
I think you have to stick with.
I think also that you should be prepared that if you're gonna give everyone five minutes. That you can't possibly do that in one night and you're gonna have to be prepared to adjourn the hearing and reconvene it another night.
Right. I would much prefer, I I will listen to him and I will, I'll talk. To him because I think um, I I really want to say to people, if it's important and there are specific things that you think will be difficult. You should write it and then we can understand it. But to have somebody think that because that person has. Written documents and whatever, that that person should get fifteen minutes and everyone else gets four. To me, that's completely unfair.
Yeah, I I didn't understand what what guy meant by that, because yeah, if you have written documents, that's when you actually should be shorter. You say, here are my full remarks. I'll give you a couple points and then then you walk away.
Right, yeah. It didn't make any sense to me. So um. I think um, I'll send out emails. I want people to give me back their point of views about this. Um, he said that we should have two public notices about the two separate meetings. I do believe it is completely legal to say. If we felt that we had to adjourn a meeting and say we're picking this meeting up again in two nights, that that's legal, but I will go over that with him again. Because I have been in public hearings that have done.
Yeah. Me too.
And we've done that, we've done that in other public hearings for the board.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have a public hearing of what we give.
Yeah, yes, you have to do that. We have to have this public hearing, then we have to come back and say if you want to make any changes, then once we agree, we give it to the town board. Just one public hearing.
Yeah, the the town board, if they make substantial changes after the first public hearing, has to have a second hearing. But but not us, as I understand. Is that right, Tim?
No, the town board will have a public hearing regardless.
Oh, I know that regardless, but if you have a public hearing and then you guys decide to change something substantial in the zoning law. I believe you would then be required to have a second public hearing.
Yes.
But 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 we are not required to have a second public hearing just because we changed something.
Correct.
That's right.
Yay. Okay, so um. Good, thank you. I'm sorry we've gone over fifteen minutes. Um. Let us say we are adjourned.
Thanks again, everybody, for your incredible hard work.
Yes, thanks.
Following someone far has been outstanding and astonishing.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. Good night, everyone.
Night.